...two thousand nineteen, January twenty first, two thousand nineteen, special meeting. Have a motion?
Throw it in.
Mary?
Logan.
Say my friend, oh yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we don't have anyone signed in this afternoon, do we?
We do.
I didn't think so. Okay, let's go to the reports then. Mr. Gosd, you're just going to give us some maintenance updates again these activities. Greg?
Just really a few things we want to talk about here. We continue upgrading on the LED lights. We do have the Hartz swamp waves and all installed now, so that's done. We're doing the LED upgrade now around the building, the outside building, so we've done a lot with that. Uh, the Midway sewer treatment plant is on track, everything's on track. We're hoping completion, everything in the ground, all by February. They have the road construction, everything's going great there. HVAC, we have a lot of pumps we've been rebuilding, uh, water equipment, things like that. What's happening with that? Uh, we have several bids going out. We have several trash bids, roof of Duval, GB floor, GB bleachers, all these are going out in paper. Within the next, uh, couple of weeks, everything's going to be out in paper. I do have one thing I want to talk to you about. It's, uh, we have our HVAC system that's at all our schools. We're looking at the schools at West Hamlin, that was basically two thousand. We got systems there that's nineteen years old. LCHS, believe it or not, we're thirteen year old now at LCHS. Hamlin, thirteen years on that equipment. Hartz pre-K eight, we're six years on that. We're having a lot of issues with controllers and this older equipment failing on us. I've replaced probably twenty controllers of one brand, but I buy everything I can on eBay because these are getting very hard to find. This equipment is a T one, T two type equipment. It's becoming obsolete. There's a new system out that we've been looking at, been discussing with, I'm going to leave it for you to look at if you want to look at. It's called Eco-Structures, and this is a new system that has a lot of new controllers and new equipment. This is all web-based. Right now, when we go out somewhere, some of the new controllers that we use here now are very hardy. The shutting them off and turning them on doesn't stress the electronics and what we'll be dealing with here later. So that's some, some new stuff that we're looking at. And right now, if I go out or if we're doing scheduling and somebody calls or there's issues, I'm going to go find me someplace where I can do a VPN if I'm away from the school system, a VPN, and then I have to go and look at these units and make adjustments I need. Same thing with Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Kaming. They always have to, somebody call them. So this new system will be a web-based opportunity where you can do it on your phone. I go to my phone, I can make the changes to the air hammers, make schedule changes, and it makes it a whole lot easier. A whole lot more user-friendly, more robust in that right now, when I lose, I get everything running really good, and then when I lose power, then all these controllers just drain out and we start all over. To reprogram, all these things we have to do. Years ago, we're, we're in a system now, years ago, that where we had an air conditioner in the window, you go over and turn it on, you got thermostat on the wall, you turn it on. You got so many products now that, that we have to, we have to open a hot water valve. We have to open a chill water valve, outside air dampers, facing bypass dampers. All these components go in, and they have to get the signal, the communication from the, the system we got. It likes, at the time, nineteen years ago, it was a pretty good system, but it's changed. So what we're proposing is, when we've looked at it, Mr. Mikkiv and I discussed it very here recently, we're looking at upgrading the schools. We're looking at Lincoln County High School, Don Valley Middle School, Hartz pre-K eight, Hamlin Elementary side and the middle school side, and West Hamlin. Some of the other schools, we only have door access, but these are our primary HVAC areas that we're looking at. Doing some of the work in-house, like running the CAT five wires and controllers. All this is changing right now. The system we have now is, it's called a daisy chain. So if a controller fell here in the middle, it could throw out four controllers. So this new system, one fails, it doesn't pull the other one down. That's, that's the newest technology. We're looking at changing out all this on the web-based and leaving our existing sensors there, room temperature sensors, uh, CO2 sensors, humidity sensor. We'll leave those there and replace those as needed with the newer sensors. They're called smart sensors that we put out. So doing that and not doing the sensors, we're looking at a price for this based on what we're, people that, we came in and done a inventory of everything we need to upgrade, all the controllers, bring everything back up to the newest system, the new web servers and all these things that we have to put in, at five hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at five hundred thousand dollars to do an upgrade to all of our existing schools that has the EMS type system on it. Well, we discussed a meeting, we'll meet with SBA to see possibilities. This would be an MIP project that would be interested in, uh, in pursuing that. Get our guidelines from the ZMM and the people at the SBA to see what we can do with it, so.
And we'll need to meet with them sometime here soon because I think those MIPs are in March, the first week of March, maybe something like that?
Yeah, thirteenth, I think, or something like that.
So what you're saying is you're, something you're considering, but you're, it would be highly dependent upon SBA money?
Yes, we would come up with some matching funds if we did it like that, yeah. Uh, and we're just at the point where this is, it's really, the older equipment's really a struggle. Like I said, I get on eBay, I'll buy every controller, twenty-eight fourteen or twenty-nine twenty controller I can find. Now, if I buy them through, I have to buy these through and over, that twenty-nine twenty controller's almost five thousand dollars. I get them for five hundred on eBay, and I seen them out, get them repaired for like three hundred, so. That's a pretty good thing. And the other, the twenty-eight fourteen, those run thirteen hundred, I get those on eBay for five, so. Three and five, whatever I can find them. They're hard to find, they're really getting hard to find. We have some at West Hamlin we can no longer get, their version one controllers. Their I two, or I one, they're twenty-eight seventy-six, so those are getting hard to find. We had Mason Bear, we set up a pretty good deal with them where they're letting us have their pricing to send them out and get them repaired now, so that's helped us a lot. Uh, one of the repairs, like four of us paying, and a twenty-eight fourteen, which is the most common, that's at the high school, it's at Hartz pre-K eight, uh, these are, that's one of the bigger ones that's there. The twenty-eight fourteen repair price is three fifty-four. And, uh, uh, the other one, the big one, is a twenty-nine twenty, which is why Hartz has a lot of these in there. It's a repair cost of one, it's five thousand, it's six hundred twenty-one dollars. These are different pricing that we, that we're using now to, uh, to get the controls repaired. We have actuators, we have actuators that's constantly, and just Hartz alone, uh, recently had some issues at a Hartz gym because of an actuator, a hot water valve actuator. They're discontinued, so we had to go to Blimmo, figure out what we need to make, make, put together to make it work so that we can open hot water valves and close hot water valves to control the temperature. Outside air dampers, all those things. It's just, you got so many parts that, that now you used to not have to worry about, just flip the switch and turn the air conditioner on. This is all, all this has changed so much. Pretty much all gone.
Now, where are we on the soccer field? I know you all have been talking with the architect.
Uh, soccer field, uh, I think we, we, we actually have been talking to the architect. We sent things in back in December. I think Mr. Mikkiv may have had a discussion with Mr. Ferguson on that.
I, I spoke to Mr. Ferguson last week. He was at the meeting of Bill and Iten Bridgeport, and he indicated to me, and I shared with Greg, the first thing that's going to have to happen is a survey of the soccer field.
Surveyor.
A survey. And, uh, he was in hopes of being able to get someone down here this week, but I'm sure with this weather, that's not going to happen. But, um, that'd be the first step in the process.
That's our first step. What you're going to be doing is looking at the elevations, what we have, and the drainages, and how much topsoil is going to be needed to, to crown it, no scientific measure.
I mean, so right now, the specs haven't been finalized, right?
No, that's, that's his first step. He wants, wants to do the, uh, the actual survey of it, get some grade states, where the grades are, and then he can be able to run the specs of what needs to be done to bring it up.
Then after you get the specs, then there's a, what do you, do you, your advertisements?
Yeah.
What time are we talking about?
Uh, based on, uh, we usually advertise it ten days, put out ten days, they come in. We usually have a pre-bid where they come out and look at everything. So after that, it become down to the pricing. Do we grip on the price? If we grip on the price, we, we continue on.
So theoretically, possibly then, in about a month's time after getting the specs, you could actually see what the, the.
Everything, we don't have to rebid it for some reason, yeah.
About a month.
Realistically, yes.
I'm just trying to think, even though it's cold out here, February is almost here.
It's coming, it's coming, it's, uh, we, uh, we was talking the other day, I said, you know, about another month or so of cold weather, and we're done, so.
Okay, on a related note, the, the track at the high school football field.
Right.
Is, is Mr. Watts, or has anybody been, have spoken to you about any of their thoughts on?
I, I have, I've been in conversations with Mr. Watts. He and I talked, actually, we talked a little bit this morning, I talked to him a little bit yesterday. Here's the discussion we had this morning. We talked about the pole vault pit. So the pole vault pit, I guess, was donated or somebody got it or paid it, I don't know what.
Another school.
His feeling on that is it's too far gone to even use now. It's set out in the weather, it's shot. So the mats, they're all coming apart, and the metal, I guess the metal deteriorated pretty bad with it. I guess you slide in, slide your pole in there and flips you, I don't know what it is, something like that. Uh, I talked to him about the long jump. I said, what, what do you want to do about the long jump pit? He said, that, that would be a lot of expense in doing that, and he, he, his saying is not to do this until the actual track is done. This will be part of the track process. He did say that he would like to have a shot put area for, to throw the shot put. He wanted an eight-foot square pad, he's working on that. And he's going to get back with me on what he wants, how he wants it, what specs he wants and what he wants to do on that. His thinking is that's going to be a kind of a temporary, and once we ever do, uh, the track around there, so we could just bust the concrete out and redo that, so.
Okay. Track season is in the spring, right? Does anyone know when it begins?
It's, uh, what, February twenty eighth, March one?
So March, beginning in March?
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay. Now, I guess what I'm trying to think, are we going to try to put lines to mark off where the lanes of the track would be around the football field?
That would be something that he will do.
Because, you know, track season is, you know, once again, a couple of months away. From what you're saying, it doesn't sound like we're going to have the pole vault and those other things available, which I guess, I thought that would be one step that we'd have to take in conjunction with the work that landscaping people are doing. But that doesn't seem to be a factor right now, maybe that'll happen later. But at the minimum, we are still going to hope to have lanes around the football field, right?
Uh, he, he done the lanes, actually done around the school access, so he knows Charlie's going to put his lanes in there.
He just painted those on.
Well, that's one of mine. It doesn't look to me like, unless the, uh, because from the last conversation we had in the fall, it looked like they would be able to come in and we'd be able to cut the grass and have foot traffic, or I guess a lot of foot traffic on there. But they would be able to go ahead and put the, the lanes on the track around there.
It's, it's totally away from the football field itself, it's on the outside of the football field, so.
So they could do that, because, you know, in the past, if you go out there, and I'm sure you've seen, you'll see the lanes around on the black cop and everywhere going around the school, um, you know, hoping that at least, at the very least, that they're, they would have a place to, to, they're not going to be able to have meat there, obviously, but at least they would be able to have lanes around the.
And I, and I think he's, he's, he, you know, Mr. Watts seems, he does a really good job a lot of God, and I think in that area of the track that we're talking about, that, that he's going to try and clean rocks out, things like that. I'm sure he'll have his team do that.
Okay.
Which is a lot, a lot of rocks that's there, is not part of the original topsoil.
All right, Greg's talking.
He knows that.
Okay. Well, I, so that answers a lot of our questions, or at least now, as far as, you know, is the installation of the, the pit and things like that, I guess we're just going to have to discard them or something. Uh, and then as time goes on, maybe we'll look into, they will, or somebody will purchase them, because I know we bought that from one of the high school, Huntington or Catmore, one of the other schools.
It's green, I don't know what the real school.
It's really green.
Yeah, apparently, it's the one he's. I don't know anything, I don't even know what it looks like, so I can't comment. But anyway, okay, so at least, uh, you've been talking to Mr. Watts, and hopefully he'll have some idea of maybe, if nothing else, he'll have a place to practice or to, you know, do their, that.
He, he was more concerned when we talked, he said he'd really like to have the, you know, he's concerned about the expenses too. He's not wanting to just put something in just to be put it in, carry it back out.
Right, well, I understand.
So he's, uh, the eight-foot, he said eight-foot square pad, again, you know, I told him to just work that up for.
This is for putting the shot, or, right?
You throw the metal ball or whatever, yeah.
Putting the shot.
It used to be a rubber pad that we would do.
But anyway, I, I don't see, but the installation of the other pit, you know, the pole vault and the hide, if that was going to be something we had, that, that's all for right now.
Is it, that's like an all-weather cover that's over there? Like, I'm puzzled by it.
I think that the cover, when I looked at it, there, it had, it was split, a different thing, it was not a good.
But I mean, I don't even have what it looks like, but this is something that you, in the winter, you take up and?
It should have been taken up. Put somewhere.
But I mean, there's parts of it, though, that are into the ground, aren't there? I mean, I, I thought that was a part of.
The, the actual metal pit's actually in the ground.
That's what I mean, so that part goes in the ground.
Mats and things like that that they fall upon, that, you take those out, have to store those.
Right. So I, it's still maybe possible that the metal part could be used and you could replace it with the mats?
He, what he informed me is that he felt like it was too far gone.
Both mats and metal part?
Well, we'll look at it.
All right, I, I quit. Anybody have anything else on maintenance related? Well, keep them warm, Mr. Gosd.
Keep them warm.
And here in the office, too. It stays warm in here, I think, but. Okay, thank you, Greg. Okay, next we have Mr. King, Kirk King, who's going to talk us about federal programs update. I've already asked him if he was affected by the shutdown, he said he wasn't, so.
Not yet.
He's been working.
Good afternoon. Um, I, I want to apologize in advance to the two board members that are joining us via phone. We're going to be referencing a blue folder that is at each of your seats. Um, and in talking with Mr. Mikkiv, he just asked me to kind of catch us up on federal programs, and there's a lot of educationees in federal programs, and there's a lot of letters being thrown around. So I just did a little quick sheet of, it's in the right side of your folder, and it says federal programs, and there's some bold and underlined information there for you. Uh, what is ESSA? Uh, it replaces NCLB, and No Child Left Behind, and, uh, and it replaces ESEA. So in, you've heard ESEA and NCLB, and now it's ESSA. So, uh, just, just to clear up some, maybe some confusion, did that for you. Uh, we're going to focus primarily today, though, in, in this presentation, in Title One. And then if you look down on the paper a little way, you're going to see CSI, Comprehensive Support and Improvement. Um, and the reason we're focusing on Title One and, uh, and CSI is, again, it's to save some time and just clear up some things. So on the right-hand side of your packet, you will see all of our schools that have qualified and they're ranked for, uh, Title One funds. And our Title One allocation for this school year was one million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And based on that, our schools are ranked by the percent of students at risk, and that's our poverty ranking. Now, in days gone by, we, we used a multiplier, and we used, Title One teachers had to go out, and it was based on income and so forth and so on, and, and you may remember that from, from the past. But now these numbers are gathered strictly, and these are raw numbers gathered from DHHR. And if you look under each school, you'll see a number, and that's the number that, of students that qualify for Title One services. Okay, so if you look at our, our number one ranked school ranger, you'll see the number eighty-six, so forth and so on, if you'll turn back. And you'll see how they ranked by number and the total enrollment. And based on that information, I am responsible to come up with a per-pupil allowance, and that provides equitable service to the, to the schools and to the LEA to help support those, the said schools. I can provide those numbers if you'd like, um, but I just wanted to let you know, that's what, that's how we determine what each school receives. Um, and I'd, I'd like to let you know the Title One currently supports seventeen full or part-time positions in Lincoln County. Now, that does not include our parent educators or our part-time interventions out there that each school can request, uh, if, if that's what they feel or see as a need, or if that's something that the LEA suggests to the administrators. Uh, and that, those seventeen full or part-time positions are without, out in the schools and here in the central office. So they're, and, uh, the good news to that is, based on the projections, based on what we're hearing, based on the most current information shared with us, our dollar amount will not decrease a whole lot this year. Okay? Are there any questions thus far?
And when, these seventeen, are all those Title One, or are they a combination of federal funding?
Some are combinations of Title Two, which are instructional coaches. Uh, there are a couple of positions out in, there's one in the high school and a couple of positions here who are blended, um, that receive eighty percent, like I am eighty percent, uh, ten percent, ten percent. So we, we're going to try to keep that. Uh, the reason, we were, if you remember last fall, we thought we were going to have to move everything to Title One because Title Two was going to magically go away. That information has, that conversation has stopped. So we will be receiving those Title Two funds as well at this current time. Now, I hope that after next week, I might be able to come back to you because tomorrow morning, I get to go to the wonderful, warm city of Kansas City, Missouri for the National Title One Conference, looking so forward to that negative eight degrees. Uh, but that's okay, we'll, we'll do what we have to do, and, and we will be getting some updates, and, and I plan to, to bring back to you any information that I gathered, any of those, those workshops and seminars that I attend. Again, just on the right side, I just wanted to let you see where their Title One services, and there's a breakdown on each page that shows you what of that allocation, that total allocation goes to salaries, and then there's a remaining budget, and you can, and it's just a breakdown of different areas that I talk with the principals and leadership teams with so that we can support those schools to the best of our ability. And now I'd like to transition over to the left side of your packet, and we're going to talk about CSI, Comprehensive Schools, Comprehensive Support Improvement. We had, uh, this year, some schools identified as comprehensive support schools. We had four schools that were identified. And as a result of those comprehensive schools, uh, we, we do receive additional funding. So we took that money, we talked to our administrators, we had discussions with them. We looked at our balance scorecard data, and we had diagnostics performed by the West Virginia Department of Education. And we, we sat down with all that information, and we, we have, this grant has yet to come through. We have submitted this grant, we've had to tweak it a little bit for this, that, and the other, but we, we are confident that this grant will be coming through in the next day or so. And that grant was for six hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. We really appreciated that three in that second to last number. So there's a little bit of, a little bit of concern there. But, uh, anyway, CSI schools are comprehensive schools that are identified to be low-performing, and, uh, based on that, the state allocated some funds, some additional funding. So I, I don't think it would be a huge surprise for, if you look at the CSI schools and see it, they are the schools that rank highest in the at-risk. Imagine that, in elementary, hmm. It's not really a head-scratcher, it's kind of just the way that it is. Uh, but, but based on that conversation, and this is, this is where we're transitioning to, and this is, I will tell you that most of the seminars that I have signed up for this, for the next four days, are around trauma and mental health. We're transitioning into that part of it, and if you think back when, when it was ESEA, um, that was a literacy-based, oh, you had to have a reading specialist to be a Title One teacher. And then we had NCLB, and then we wanted to do the whole, you know, math and reading, and so we, it broadened out. Ladies and gentlemen, it's broadening out even more. It's, it's, we, we are seeing that we are trying to meet the needs, not necessarily just academic needs of our children, specifically, and a lot in our education. That's where the, we're seeing these huge gaps coming to us at, at, at the earliest ages. That's a conversation for another time, and I don't want to take too much time going down that rabbit hole. So I'd like to bring us back to what we had discussed with our leadership teams, with our, our department rep, and, and all of our administrators. We decided that this money would best be used to be, to add social workers, to add what we call resiliency, relationship, resource teachers, which is, Mr. Mikkiv says, too many Rs. We, we get lost on that one, but it's, it basically, it's, it's, we don't want to say ISS, but it really is kind of, if, if you, if you look back, and we don't want to date ourselves, but it's that step before a child is suspended. They're really struggling in class, so we have allocated funds to put in each of those four schools. And that, that teacher, three days a week, that can help those children who are really struggling, who, who the teachers and principals identify. So we have a social worker, we have the resiliency resource person. We have allotted, uh, some budget for professional development. In that professional development, I, I do want to, to share that one of the things that come from the Department of Ed is how are you going, how are you going to show growth? And how are you going to, how are you going to use this PD? And we researched, um, uh, different things, and based on the amount of funds that we received and the direction that we chose to go, we feel that it's, uh, the money that we, we identified to go to Model Schools Conference being held in Washington DC this year in June would, would be a, a good resource for our administrative teams to include the central office.
Curriculum team.
Curriculum team. That we will, we will go with them because our responsibility as the LEA is to make sure that we are working with our identified schools to get that improvement. And I'd also, I've, I've looked at the conference, and there's also a lot of trauma and mental health training. Bill Daggett's work is, is expanding out into that too as well. And then just a real quick sidebar, uh, the week before, that conference, Bill Daggett will be in the, in the state of West Virginia presenting, and it was announced at, in, in Bridgeport last week. He, they, the state feels so strongly in his work that he'll be presenting to the superintendents at the Superintendent's Association. So I think what we're trying to do is in line with the money that we have. We could try to bring them in, but it's almost four hundred thousand dollars. And that would just wipe out any help that we would have. And this first year, we're getting six hundred sixty-six thousand, blah, 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 blah. Next year, only seventy percent of that, so we would just, we'd actually be going in the hole and asking the county to pick that up. I really don't want to do that, and I don't think you want me to do that.
We appreciate it.
Okay. The other thing that we've been able to do is we've been able, with this money, to start, to initiate a ten-week after-school at two of our CSI schools that did not have after-school. So we're, we are trying to initiate and get off the ground as soon as possible. We have either February fourth or February eleventh, if we can get all our ducks in a row, that we can start after-school at both Ranger and West Hamlin. In addition, we are adding another instructor at the school, the two CSI schools that are identified, already have an after-school program, but we're going to, we're trying to be equitable as possible and add another teacher and some supply money to their programs as well. So we, we, we've worked through this with the guidance of, of the curriculum team and, and all of us putting our, our thoughts together. We think we've been very equitable with utilization of this money. And, and the, the neat thing is that we're going to be able to use some, not, not a whole lot because it's in the LEA. We're going to be able to invite our schools that aren't CSI schools to the model schools because they're targeted schools. So we're hoping to, uh, be a little proactive, so to speak, and, and get those, those folks down. If you look at the, one last thing, if you look at the, uh, LEA portion of C, of the CSI, well, it's a whole bunch of stuff in it, that's the last page on the left side. You will see a TSS or a technology support specialist. That's coming out of the LEA. What we're going to be doing is, we've posted for that position, and that person will go one day a week to each of our CSI schools to help with technology issues and concerns. And then on that fifth day, there'll be a floater to either use in the CSI schools, but if we need them somewhere else in the county, we'll be able to do that as well. but if we need them somewhere else in the county, we'll be able to do that as well. And all this stuff, all these conversations and all these things have been talked with our, uh, state representative, and, and they have given us the okey-dokey. That is the, the quick and fast version of this, so if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them to the best of my ability. Now, all these, all this information is broken down pretty itemized, so that you can take a look and see where this money is going. And if you look at the Title One side, you will see if there are CSI school in the Title One, I've combined that, so you can see kinda how much federal money we're supporting our schools with.
When do you make the computations to determine which schools will be funded in the next year?
We, we will be getting a ranking, um, based off of our comparability. Uh, that is been, has been given to us loosely, and our ranking is going to change somewhat. Um, it's gonna cause me to have, be a little more creative, because in the past, we just, they, they just kinda lined up. We're gonna have to do some things with, uh, the high schools actually moved up, and a couple, the one school in particular has dropped to number eight. But in order to service them, we're gonna have to move them ahead of the high school. There's no way that we can make, and, and Mr. Mikkiv is not interested in making the high school, and I agree with him, a Title One school, because the amount of per pupil money you have to give him would wipe our county out. So, but what we're, we're, our goal is if this, if this money stays the same, we'll be able to do the same thing that we're doing this year. And there's just a little, one little caveat that I want to leave with you. And, uh, I'm planting a seed, we're revisiting. I can't promise you, but I want you to know I'm looking very seriously. We have three schools out there right now that aren't CSI that are Title One. Ray and I have been working diligently, we're not finished yet, we keep bonking heads, we'll, we'll, we'll keep beating it until we can figure it out. I can't commit one hundred percent, but we're really looking at the possibility of using some of our Title One this year and trying to commit to make sure we're forecasting in the future, so that we can put a social worker in those schools that don't have one. Because we believe, and I think we all see it with, with the trauma and mental health, that if we have a social worker in each one of our schools, we are, we are ahead, way, leaps and bounds ahead of the game. And I can't commit a hundred percent to that, but, but I, I stand before you and say I'm just about eighty percent sure that if, if our numbers stay the same, based on what we had as carryover, we'll be able to do that. And that will be a real huge benefit for the students in Lincoln County, and that's what we're here for.
Right, and we've been informed by the department to expect the same level of funding as for the.
Pretty much.
Twenty-year, twenty fiscal year, uh, that we have received this past year. But as far as receiving the actual allocation, that generally doesn't happen until May or early June, when Mr. King, the other federal programs directors across the state sit down with their pencil and their paper and put together their budgets, um, and how they're gonna support each one of those Title One schools, so.
What I was thinking of, Jeff, was the seventeen, uh, persons that work in the schools.
Yes, sir.
That pay through those funds, uh, how you would know if they were, that their schools were still eligible for those positions? That's what I was getting at.
Well, we, we go based off of, based off of what they're telling us, and that's why we're saying that we're, we're, we're gonna be okay. Now, if they change that, then we will, we'll have to, what I can do to make sure that our schools are getting cut, I'll go back and I'll look at what we're doing in LEA, I'll look at what we're doing in our other federal programs. And if we can cover something in our other federal programs, in the, in the four and the five, and there's a definition of those, or the two, if I can cover some professional development, if I have to take that away from certain schools and move it in the LEA and move it around. Like Mr. Mikkiv says, June is a crazy time for me, June and July, because that's when I'm trying to move all of these funds, the different funds around and blend. And that's the other thing that's different now with ESSA, is they encourage us to blend funds. A few short years ago, when I started this position, they wanted everything separated. They wanted Title One here and Title Two here, you had spreadsheet, and never did the two meet. Now it's like, okay, you just.
They wanted to combing.
Yeah, they just want, and, and I'm doing everything I can to, to make that work. And I, I really think that if we continue what we're doing, and with, with, with everyone having these conversations, uh, I think we're gonna be, again, we're gonna be ahead of the game.
Well, I was asking, cause I know that Mr. Mikkiv and Mr. Lindell are on top of this anyway, if there were any persons out there who might be in jeopardy of their positions, where they couldn't be at that school any longer, they might have to transfer or something.
We've already had that discussion.
Well, I know that you all have, I'm just, uh, I know.
But we think right now, uh, based on everything that we're hearing, we are in good shape.
Good shape on that, Jim. All right.
That's gonna make it a lot easier, because, you know, every year we get into that, we don't know if we'll have it. We have to transfer this one Title One teacher, have the experience. We have somebody else at another school, and then come June, July, we're not, we'll have to do that with Title One this year, which is gonna be.
Good.
Really gonna be helpful.
Okay, thank you, Mr. King.
Feel free to come, contact me if you need.
Yeah, and have a good time on your trip.
Yeah.
What time's your flight in the morning?
Nine-thirty so far, they haven't sent me any texts saying it's delayed yet.
I'd expected a delay.
I, I might get a two-hour delay out of that, but.
Good luck on that. All right, thank you, Kirk, appreciate it. Okay, those were the only presentations we had, they've both been very informative though, so we're glad to have them. Um, so let's go down to the administrative section, can I have a, a motion please to look at those?
I'm in.
I think Ms. Smith made that motion, and Mr. Curry seconded that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Fred, or Carol and Fred then, okay, Mr. Mikkiv.
Okay, item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B is an out-of-state trip for Hamlin PKA fifth-grade students to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, May the twentieth through the twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, transported by charter buses and funded through the school. Item C is an agreement with the state auditor of West Virginia to provide auditing services of the county's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, according to the terms of the agreement, and those folks are here on their, they've been here for.
One week.
So they're auditing as we sit here today. Item D, adoption of the following policies, which Mr. Lindell had discussed a month ago with the board. Item E, an agreement with Jennifer Atkins to provide transportation services for a Duval PKA student for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Item F, willing Jesuit University student Stephanie Walker to perform observation at Lincoln County High School, second semester. Item G is an out-of-state trip for West Hamlin Elementary fifth-grade students to Newport, Kentucky, May the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, transported by charter buses. Item H, the following out-of-county student transfer for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Item I, out-of-state travel for Edward G. Atkins to Savannah, Georgia to attend the interdisciplinary STEM teaching and learning conference on March the twentieth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Item J is Southern Community College students Tara Sizmore and Laverne Atkins to perform observations at Hamlin PKA, second semester. Item K, a contract with DSO Mechanical LLC to provide chiller for benefit maintenance for the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty school year, based on a low bid of three thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and meeting all required specifications.
Does anybody have any questions about any of those items? If not, is that an all yes vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all yes vote on the administrative life. Move to finance, can I have a motion for those, please? Ms. Wilkinson? Mr. Curry? Mr. Ellis?
Uh, schedule of invoices totaling five hundred and sixty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents in the cash. Any questions, just let me know.
Uh, in the area of finance, we have our auditors here, we've heard, anything else noteworthy going on, Ray, other than usual?
W-two's are out, so you can get them ninety-nine hours soon, maybe the next vote, probably by Thursday or Friday, eleven, ten, ninety-nine will go out. Working on the, uh, I sent a notice out to all the financial secretaries about the event code for profit and loss. Tell them we need to get that done within the next week to ten days, so I can give a report to the board next month. And I think I'll probably be on the agenda for next, next board meeting, but by the end of, uh, February, maybe I can give you a report on that.
Your video, what's in it then?
Pardon me?
Your video.
Well, I'm actually, uh, I was emailing Angie, uh, over the weekend about that. She said she just learned some new video techniques, and I was gonna be her guinea pig, which makes me kinda nervous. It'll be the first time I've been a guinea pig.
Can't wait to see it.
You had to trade with the secretaries.
Yeah, we did, that was January eighth, so, and I went through and I was looking at school funds online, checking who had event codes in, sending emails, asking if they'd covered everything, and some think that they have. And it's kinda hard to tell, really, but, uh, you know, those are event codes covering all year long with different things, you know, different vests and concession stands and football programs and basketball. So I think we're doing well, but, uh, I sent an email out, tell them we need to get everything caught up within the next ten days.
Sounds good. Okay, does anybody have any questions about any of those finding items? If not, is that an all yes vote on those?
Yeah.
All yes, okay, let's go to personnel, we need a motion to that, please. Uh, let's, Mr. Baker made the motion on that one, seconded by who? Mr. Curry? Okay. Mr. Baker, Mr. Curry, all right, Bill?
Item A, appointment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, transfer of professional personnel. C, employment of professional personnel. D, employment of substitute service personnel pending completion of bus operators requirements and testing. E, employment of substitute service personnel. F, employment of basic curriculum personnel. G, leave of absence. And H, retirement and resignations. And just a reminder, February twentieth is when we're having our work session, nine o'clock at noon.
Okay, there's a lot on this personnel thing, there's gonna be a lot more to come though, isn't there?
Yeah, there's been a lot more to come, yeah.
Of course, one that's, I don't know, it's all, a lot of merit, noteworthy. See, we got our assistant principal at the high school, which Ms. Smith will, and then Mr. Cummings is retiring.
Mr. Cummings is retiring, yes. It's Ms. Ms. Smith, uh, we've, uh, I've talked to her about every day, and they're trying their best to find a sub or someone to finish out her, so that the release of work as a candidate.
Teach the Spanish, capital, I think.
Saint Al?
Saint Al.
Saint Al. Saint Al.
Good, good. Okay, anybody have any questions about any of the personnel items? If not, is that an all yes on those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all yes there. Okay, we're down to comments concerned, board members, anybody have anything?
No, I don't.
Ray, Carol, anybody? I don't leave.
I don't have anything for you, Mr. Currie. I'm saving it for next week.
Uh-oh, that's scary, yeah. All right, if there's nothing further to come for us this afternoon, then let's adjourn until Tuesday, February the fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six o'clock PM here at Hamlin. Vote, or a motion, please? Mr. Wilkinson? Mr. Curry, all yes? Bye, Riley, bye, Carol.
Bye, you all.